Okay, are we having it running?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any questions or reports received and filed?
Yes, we do. We have the sheriff's August twenty twenty-four fees and we have the collector's August twenty twenty-four fees.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We have camp scheduled for tomorrow, but I think it's canceled and everything on the agenda. Thursday's HBA golf tournament, friends have been already dinner Thursday night. Friday, the Havana Habitat Build Dedication. Friday and Saturday, if you're out in Wartsville area, I would just stay out of there unless you're going to the Wartsville rummage sales because it's going to be crazy traffic and people park wherever they want to. Just a warning, Sheriff, you'll be getting the calls Friday and Saturday for that.
Yeah, we're bringing people on.
Okay. And if you're going to Wartsville, they don't have the bridge down to One Lane yet, but they're getting the traffic light up there tomorrow with the bridge. So first traffic light near Wartsville. It's gonna be interesting for a few weeks. I think that's about it.
I don't have much to report. Let's see. Tomorrow, a two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the U.S. meeting. Thursday, Western District Commissioners in Boone County.
West Central, right?
West Central, yes.
Not just the Western District Commissioners?
West Central.
Oh, I thought it was just Western District Commissioners.
I thought it was gonna be fun.
Okay, well, today, the Shrimp Pot, the daughters of American Revolution, are gonna have a meeting in Avery Island, American Revolution Constitution Day. Library Board Meeting tonight at six P.M. Yeah, Wednesday, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth committee, birthday committee meeting at six P.M. Thursday, we're in Columbia. Friday, I have Chamber Leadership Forum and it is the United Way Day of Sharing. And then also that night, the St. Peter Street Fair. And then Monday, I'm meeting with HCGA. So that is all I've got. Presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. Which are you, Eric?
I'll make this pretty, I'll make this pretty quick just to give you an update on the United Way campaign results. Some of our group attended the camp, or the community-wide kickoff and announced the Pay Center campaign results. And I think it was roughly about one-point-four, one-point-six million raised to date or committed through the Pay Center campaign. Of that, our county campaign raised seventeen thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars. The pledge card total was nine thousand one fourteen and the golf tournament barbecue and raffle was eight thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. So, pretty good success. I think, I think we're tabbed to do it again next year and we will, we will take that on as far as the golf tournament.
It's not an annual?
Yeah, it looks like it could be an annual. Definitely, there's some things we, we can, we can improve upon. One thing, we want to get it out a little sooner, possibly do the, do the tournament in May or June. We kind of lucked out really by, by the rain that happened. We were supposed to be scheduled August fourteenth and the rain came. We had to cancel. We postponed to September fourth and the weather was fabulous. So maybe take advantage of an earlier tournament this next year. And we're gonna meet, the committee's gonna meet either Friday. It was a scheduled day, we may push that to next week due to some people not being able to be there and just kind of recap where we're at, how we did and things to look at for next year. So just wanted to give you all an update.
It was good. I was there all day. You did a great job. I want to thank everybody, so.
We, our team did a really good job, so.
Yeah, especially Teresa.
Yep.
Alrighty, any commission comments? Okay, bits and contracts. Approval and signing of mutual aid agreement with Health Department.
Hello.
Good morning.
This is just a mutual aid agreement that all Region F counties are signing. It's the thirteen counties here in the central region that we would assist in times of need for like environmental public health services. So if there was like a tornado in Cole County and we needed extra inspectors to come in and help with food and lodging or things like that, the other counties would help at no cost to us. So we hope that we never have to use this agreement, but DHSS is encouraging everyone to have these agreements just for coverage in times of need. Just a signature on that.
Hey, Kristy, is your, is your Region F of thirteen counties the same as Trup F?
I think that we do follow the highway virtual regions. I think they did that for simplicity. Is it like?
I think it's thirteen counties as well.
Yeah, Montgomery, Howard, Cooper, Cole, Boone, down to Camden, Morgan Miller, Monata.
You forgot Osage, the most important.
Osage, right, Galloway. Audrain.
Okay, good.
Was that thirteen? Coach, do you know if it's the same?
It should be the same.
That's what I thought it was.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the mutual aid agreement with the Health Department has with other county health departments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of Union Pacific Agreement and consent to join use of track. Is this one I've been getting all these emails on? I get to find the documents?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks.
So back in July of twenty twenty-three, the county entered into an industry traffic agreement with Union Pacific on the extended rail spur and the transload facility. Now that Capital Oil is building their oil offloading facility and they'll be a direct user of the, of the, of the line, we have to enter into a consented joint use of track. So basically, we, we agree to allow Capital to utilize part of that facility and they will also sign this agreement. So I just need approval from the County Commission to sign the agreement and then Sam, you will do, do it through the documents.
Yes.
And you should have a copy in your packet of your, yeah. I don't know if you care to see it, but the original agreement is, is pretty sizable and this one's a lot smaller. So we're just agreeing to allow Capital to, for joint use.
It was attached to the, your email?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. I was gonna say, it wasn't what the stuff you gave me this morning, so.
No, it's, it's in the email.
Good.
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Union Pacific Agreement and consent to joint use of track.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval and signing contract amendment from O-DHSS, Show Me Healthy Women Contract.
Hello, so this is just like, it's an amendment to the contract. They didn't have the years in there, so like the, the quarters were defined like June thirtieth through September thirtieth, but they didn't have the year. So they added that. And then they also added some funding for some cardiovascular screening, diagnostic and life cell intervention and some total breast and cervical cancer screenings. So as funding became available, so additional money and then they added the years for the reporting quarters instead of just listing the days.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the contract amendment from O-DHSS dash Show Me Healthy Women Contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of city-county cooperative projects agreement.
So the county entered into an agreement with the city for cooperative projects on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three and it had in that agreement the CART, Wildwood Drive Extension and Monroe Street Reconstruction. This agreement will replace that previous agreement with updates to those three projects as well as three added projects. The three added are the High Street Biodeuct, Stadium Corridor and West Edgewood and Madison Street. And the agreement spells out the language. There's specifics per each project. We've worked with the city staff to finalize the terms of this. Most important are probably the, the funding totals and I'll list those really quick. So city and county, they commit five-point-five million each for a total of eleven million. CART will see two-point-one million dollars and that'll add to the grants that we've received for the project total. Wildwood Drive will see four million dollars and the county is also putting in funds for safety and major thoroughfares to make up the difference for the total project. Monroe Street is one-point-one million dollars. High Street Biodeuct and Monroe Street, that is out for bid right now and that's the section from the expressway to just the other side of Dunkland Street. It'll improve the Dunkland Street intersection and take care of the rock bluff cut falling in, whatever. So that'll fix up that whole section through there. The High Street Biodeuct, that's two million dollars and that is to cover design costs as well as match money for a grant. They had applied for a sizable grant to the feds, did not receive that, but they're gonna continue to apply for that. So this'll allow for the match money for that. And then the Stadium Corridor, West Edgewood, that is designed and ride-of-way cost and that is to design intersections, roundabouts at Creek Trail and Stadium and Edgewood, or Creek Trail, Edgewood, Stadium, Edgewood and that whole area is in definite need of some traffic improvements. And then Madison Street, that'll be fixing up some of the curb and gutters, some stormwater issues, some sidewalk issues and then overlay and fix up the pavement. So, and that'll be from basically where it comes off of Highway fifty-four at Capital, or M.U. Healthcare Capital Region down to, almost down to Dunkland. So we feel this agreement is, is good. I know the City Council, they signed it last night. Their council approved and the mayor, I don't have that signed copy yet, so we would just want approval from the County Commission to move forward with it and then as soon as we get the signed copy from them, we'll bring it to Sam for signature. So any questions about that?
No questions, Eric, except on the, just so the public's aware that when the mention of the High Street Biodeuct, this is simply some preliminary and maybe some study and some planning, but this is really, at the end of the day, gonna be more like a twelve-plus-million-dollar project and this is just the start in that direction, right?
So they are nearly, nearly have a contract signed with Bartlett West to do the engineering.
Engineering, okay.
And that's the, you've seen some, some drawings, some, they had originally hired Bartlett West to do some preliminary layout of options and had zeroed in on one preferred option. And so this would actually be the actual engineering work that will have to be done to, you know, complement if they get the grant. So they'll have to do this work anyway and it's important to start now. It's gonna take several years to, to go through the full, the full design, working through Union Pacific, where they cross the tracks there. But, but yes, this is for design plus it'll be that extra money needed for the match if they get a grant.
And what is the total price tag roughly?
It, it varies. I've seen twelve million, fourteen million, somewhere in that ballpark. By the time we go to construction, it might be nearing fifteen million.
Okay.
So the preliminary designs were just spitballing? I mean, just throwing it up against the wall and seeing what was? Because didn't they have several different ideas or something? So that wasn't anything that was engineered or?
It was engineered to the extent, I mean, they looked at it to see what, what might work, but there's no like down-in-the-weeds engineering type work. There's a lot of bridge design, that's a big component of that. It also would replace, there's another structure on Missouri Boulevard down kind of below. It's the full.
Yeah, there were roundabouts and stuff on some of the designs. So I'm gonna be here sticking the mud here, but it's an expensive project and we're having trouble finding money for it to start with. What would it cost just to replace it? The way it is, there's no design changes and just get a new bridge? And if that's a city question, I mean, I don't mean to.
I, I can get you that answer. That was an option in, in the seven or so that they looked at. And the preferred option is shorting, shortening up the bridge and then building a roundabout intersection right at Missouri Boulevard rather than, it's, it's a little awkward how you come in. It's just.
Yeah, I've seen, I've, I've saw the conceptual drawings, I guess. They weren't engineered drawings. So it was just something that came up in another conversation too because I thought there had been some design done on it and it's a, it's an expensive project, so where can we tighten our belt at?
Design in this, in its conceptual design, so it's just analyzing what options might look like and just drawing them on paper. When you get into detailed design, that's where you get into all the hydraulics, the structural stuff. That's where, that's where a lot of the cost comes in. I, I'll, I'll have to get you an answer on what that bare bones option was. I don't, that's not the preferred option, but it, it's gonna be in the seven or eight million dollar range, I think.
I mean, I'm, I don't just want chopped steak either. I'd prefer a ribeye. But I mean, if I don't have money for a ribeye, I'm gonna have me a burger. So I'm, this is just an expensive project. If there's a way to cut back on it, it just seems like putting it back the same way it was might be cheaper. And if I'm wrong, then the other way is a different way to do it. Or if it's gonna fix some things or safety issues, then it's another thing. It's, that's just a lot of money to put on engineering and then the project itself, so.
They did hold a public hearing and invited comments and what came out of that and just other analysis was that the option that I mentioned with the roundabout now, I don't, I don't know that that's set in stone and final. It might be good to have the city staff come up and maybe get into more discussion on that.
Well, we'll be a part of this.
Going forward, we'll be a part of it.
We'll be a part of it. So I, I, you know, I've lived with it all my life, just as it is. And to me, it, I agree with Jeff, it, it works fairly well. Works really pretty well. So, you know, putting it back just the way it was, only widening a little bit or whatever. To me, I don't have any issue with that either. Anyway, well, that's, yeah, that's, that's gonna be a lot of discussions.
Right. Either way you look at it, the money needs to be there for the project, so.
Yeah, so.
Not to belabor it, but the, the grant that was attempted to, it tried for, was it a eighty-twenty kind of thing?
Yeah, eighty-twenty, so the two million and it's, some of the, the numbers can fluctuate a little bit, but it was eighty-twenty.
The two million would generate an eighty million, I'm sorry, eight million?
Do you remember that? Matt, you might know, I don't know if you guys, that's, that's what I recall.
It was an infrastructure grant.
Yeah, there's some really big, large infrastructure grants that are out there. They are eighty, yeah, eighty-twenty is the norm.
Okay.
Again, those, those things can flush out over time.
Yeah, so we just need to keep moving ahead, so.
I think there's a, a desire to get some other funding partners in town to participate. So with that and then a possible grant, you know, there, there's a lot of different funding options, I think, but we just need to explore those. But we have to have a plan going forward to know exactly what those costs are gonna be.
And the city approved it last night at council meeting.
I'm, I'm good with it. I, I just was kind of concerned about the, the cost on that, but if we give the city their money and that, that's how they choose to spend it on that, then I guess that's where it needs to go, so we need to vote on that then?
I think so. I'll make a motion unless you want it to.
No, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the city-county cooperative projects agreement.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Sheriff, discuss Accurate Controls Contract.
Yeah, this is a contract you actually approved last commission meeting and not that I was wrong, but I wasn't correct. So the, the amount of money was forty-six, eight, twenty-five, fifty-one. The actual amount was seventy-four, eight, twenty-five, fifty-one. It isn't our budget to, to pay this extortion, this money, this maintenance money. And like I said, this is, I was partially correct. I just wasn't all the way correct. And kudos to Jeff for using the word conceptual today. I think that's nice.
It was on the toilet paper.
I don't know, you already approved the budget, but I don't know if you need to re-approve this since, and he's already signed it, so I don't know if you need to just redo the numbers or, I, I don't know how you have to fix this.
I was ready to stand with what I signed, so.
Well, I'm good with that, but I, I wanted to make sure you understood what the actual amount was. I missed the, the last section. I misread it, so. It's Brian's fault, he's not here.
He's sick today.
Yeah, I know, that's a good reason to blame stuff on him.
So we approved the contract?
But you approved it for forty-six, eight, twenty-five and the total cost was seventy-four, eight, twenty-five?
Yeah, and it's specific in the minutes, the smaller amount that you approved.
What the contract said?
I don't like the smaller amount.
Seventy-four, eight, twenty-five, fifty-one.
Probably just need to make an amendment to that motion, so. Do you know who made the motion or?
Harry.
Harry did.
That's the total amount.
We want to do that, clean it up?
Notice, Sam caught it, I didn't, so, and then she caught it.
Yeah.
Sam is our scholar.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the amount approved for the Accurate Controls Contract previously agreed to at forty-six, eight, twenty-five point five-one to now be the amount of seventy-four, eight, twenty-five point fifty-one. Did I say fifty-one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Don't let that happen again.
No, I'm not gonna say that either.
I did get emails and files and drafts.
In the meantime, doing new business. Counts payable review?
I'd ask for approval of counts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, second, final reading of budget adjustment number eleven.
I do need action today. This is for thirty-three thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars. We'll call it ninety-eight dollars for the sheriff's department and their insurance line for revenue that was received.
I'll make a motion to approve court order budget adjustment number eleven for thirty-three thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, capital improvements, sales tax, additional revenue discussion.
So we've been visiting on this going back a couple of months and as we started looking at future sales taxes and what that might look like, we got to start getting into crunching some numbers on where we sit with our current sales tax and rent revenues generated to date. And so I got a, got a sheet in front of you right here and then also another one here that'll be part of that conversation. So this sheet, what this represents is the funding allocation along the left side matches what was presented in, we presented information to the community and the vote was coming up on the current sales tax. And so the categories are shown on, on here and these are the numbers that we, we try to stick to as we're working through the sales tax. And it, it's not always gonna be a hundred percent these exact numbers, but we try to match as close as we can. And so as we've been going through the, the first two and a half, almost three years, we can see some, some needs are gonna be beyond what we had allocated originally in this document. And as we started looking at the revenues coming in, out to the side of the eleven-by-seventeen page shows what was projected and what is actual. So when we were setting up and presenting this information, this was in twenty-twenty. COVID was going on. It was voted on early, or April, so early in twenty-twenty-one and we were still, still in it, coming out of it. We made the assumption that revenues would be flat from using the twenty-nineteen number. They would be flat for twenty and twenty-one, the remaining two years left to the sales tax, which was six-point-five million. Now, what actually happened is in twenty-one, or twenty, they came in just a little over seven million and then twenty-one was seven-point-three million, okay? And that's eight percent and four percent higher from what it was. And so we were projecting flat, they grew at eight and four percent. When we set up this, we set it up assuming we'd have a two percent growth but based on flat numbers for the two years leading up to that. And so in twenty-twenty-two, we were projecting six-point-six-three million dollars. Revenue actually received was seven-point-seven-nine-two, so almost eight million. And then it's just progressively increased the same amount. In twenty-twenty-two, we were about six-point-two percent versus a projected two percent, again based on a low number, and then twenty-twenty-three was four-point-one percent. I think right now, we're probably tracking a little bit closer to that two percent what we've seen so far in twenty-twenty-four. And so what this is doing is it's, it's, our revenues are gonna be quite a bit more than what we projected to the tune of six-point-eight million dollars over the five-year period. As we, as I mentioned when I first started talking, some of the categories at least that we're looking at on the road and bridge side, we know we're lower than where we really should have been. Inflation kind of got us and maybe some, some assumptions, just low assumptions, you know, not realizing how things might project over the course of the period. And so some of the needs I've highlighted and areas that I would recommend that we increase the funding allocation in the categories. We, we visit about this individually over the past couple of months, you know, really gone through this to see, you know, what's appropriate and then also took it to our Road and Bridge Advisory Board and they recommended this arrangement here. And I'll go through that and explain how we came up with each numbers, or each of the numbers. So in the category of upgrade roads to pave, we had estimated three million. The project, we got two roads that we would like to do. It's Hickory Hill and North Rock Creek and just one of those projects is three million. So we're, we were way low estimated plus inflation is hitting us pretty bad. So we would, we would ask that we add three-point-five million to that category for a total of six-point-five. I'm gonna skip projects in cooperation with villages. I'll come back to that at the end. In resurfacing and concrete street replacement, we had estimated, and this was quite a bit of a jump from the previous period, eight-point-seven-five million. That's one-point-seven-five each, each year. And we would like to bump that to two million a year for a total of ten million dollars. As Matt can attest, we're pushing that two million dollar the past two years and even going into next year. We really need to keep investing in our pavements. What we can do now through preventative and overlays and everything can really get those in good shape and will make long-term differences as far as how much money we gotta put in over time. So we believe that's appropriate there too. The contingency number, looks like I may have given you the wrong one. We had, we were gonna bump that to one-point-two-three million, but we actually would request that we put that two-hundred-and-thirty thousand into equipment instead of adding that to contingency. So as we're tracking with our equipment again, it's just like, you know, the pavements and taking care of those. We gotta keep, keep our equipment in good shape. And a motor grader, we just awarded one of those a couple of weeks ago and that's three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So that's a big chunk out of the four-hundred that we normally would spend. So we, we'd like to request a little bit more money there. Down in the county facility equipment improvements, so under facility improvements, we would bump that number from three-point-two-seven-five to three-point-nine-four-five. Under parks, that takes a little bit of explanation. We have one point, or one-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We would request bumping that to five-hundred thousand. And so we had, from the previous sales tax, we had a hundred thousand allotted. We didn't spend all of that. We took some of that extra money and put it towards the current one, which, in which we only allocated a hundred-and-fifty thousand. We spent out of those two amounts, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand. So we're about a hundred and nine over that hundred-and-fifty thousand allotment. So we're getting, you know, we're approaching the three-hundred thousand mark. We would like to go after a grant at County Park for a, a new, a new playground and that's gonna be, I believe that's a fifty-fifty match on that one, the ones that they have out typically for that. So we would like to have some funds to be able to go after that. And let me go back to the projects in cooperation with the villages. So where we, where we were originally, we had one-point-seven million. So seven-hundred thousand of that goes to each of the communities over the five-year period. They get a hundred thousand each. That's been traditional the past few sales tax cycles. And then the other million are the cooperative projects in which they've submitted applications and our Road and Bridge Advisory Board reviewed, recommended, the County Commission approved. And so six of the seven communities have been working on projects and various different improvement projects in their communities. We would like to add eight-hundred thousand to that total. And what I've got here is another sheet in. And what I've got here is another sheet in how we would break that down and how that would be allocated to the, to the community. So, as, as we go through and we work with all seven of them, they rely on us a lot for recommendations on how to maintain their pavements. Matt works with the various mayors and decides on what to do, whether it's a chip seal or overlay. And as, as we're seeing, a lot of these communities don't have enough money in just a hundred thousand they get over the five-year period to take care of their pavements adequately. They need a lot of help. And generally, there's no grants out there for pavement overlays. Usually, the grants are for sidewalk improvements, stormwater, you know, that's what we're seeing. So, there's really not that much out there for pavement overlays. And that's really the only funding options they have is that hundred thousand dollars over the five-year period. And so, what we would request to do is put eight-hundred thousand in, add eight-hundred thousand to that. And we brought that to our Roden Bridge Advisory Board. They recommended splitting it out based on a fifty-fifty split of population and road mileage. And so, that's shown on this sheet here. And if you look down below, you can see the population from 2020 census and then the road lengths in miles. And if I, if we take that percentage base with a fifty-fifty split of those two, you'll see how it varies between the seven communities. And as we work with them on what their needs are, we feel like this breakout is pretty appropriate for where they need to be. The main ones that have the higher population and the higher road mileage are Wardsville, Russellville, St. Martins and Taos. And that's where most of the population is. And they also have the majority of the miles in the, in total. So, they'll, they'll see a little more percentage. But then the other three smaller communities, they're still getting a decent amount to put towards what they're already working on, so. I don't really have any much more to say. I know we visited individually over the past couple of months, just to kinda see, see where the commission might be on this. We brought it to our Roden Bridge Advisory Board. They, they approved what we had presented, but also recommended that the split out to the communities be based on this population and road mileage basis. So, just like to hear what the commission thinks. Is this the right path to go? One thing I just, I'll throw out there, we, we have seen in the past three years sizable growth well beyond what was projected, that two percent. I think a conservative number would be just to estimate two percent for the next two years. And that's what we've done here for the basis for the total that we're gonna see over the five-year period. So, questions, comments?
I might have fewer questions, or maybe they won't have any. But because I sit on the Roden Bridge Advisory, we, we spent a fair amount of time massaging these numbers a week or two ago and came up with this approach as, it wasn't the first approach we discussed, but we settled on it. Seems reasonable.
I, I think y'all did a good job on, especially the top part, the upgraded roads to paved, because that's been a part of the initial campaign of our absent sales tax. And we need to continue to upgrade those. It needs to be a priority. We've done a lot of work with stormwater. I know that's another priority, too, and a lot of these other areas. But this upgrading the roads is huge and then taking care of the roads that we have. And you put some more in there for the resurfacing. So, thought those were some very good moves. Get down below that to the county facility equipment improvements. I don't know, I'd probably just take the extra money there and throw it into contingency. And when we, cause we've got some, a lot of facilities improvement that we need to take care of. We've got another judge coming in. We need some more room for that. We can do some heating, cooling, electric plumbing upgrades at the courthouse. It's gonna take a lot of money to do that. And that's gonna be a priority over parks at this point. I don't mind putting some more to parks or if a project comes up, y'all come in and say, hey, we've got contingency in there. Can we get a fifty or a hundred thousand dollars to match for a grant or something like that? If we put a contingency, then there's still an opportunity out there for the parks. So, that's just one thing I was gonna throw out there. We've got a lot of stuff coming down the pipe with capital. But otherwise, it looks, looks good. I don't know if we have to approve this today or we kinda just move things around.
I think this is wonderful for our communities and I think it's, it's kind of an early Christmas present type. You could say, but I mean, it, I think, I think you've done a great job on, on presenting this looking at who gave me the benefit, so.
We, we ran and crunched a lot of numbers back at the office to see where this was all gonna hit and fit. Jeff, I do appreciate your comment about just putting all that money into contingency. That does make a lot of sense. And the, the main thing on the parks, we're basically out of money for improvements now. That doesn't mean we're not gonna keep doing what we're doing with general maintenance and small improvement things, but as far as sales tax improvements, we're already over. So, if a grant were to come around and we apply, then we can come to you and say, hey, we wanna go after this and get commission approval. And just keep it in contingency.
That's where I would see it.
Yeah, I don't, that's.
I think you've got the opportunity there. It's not just taking it, putting it in computerization or in capital. It's saying it's, it's there when something does come about. We've had a lot of improvements at the parks in the last, what, year or two years? So, we've had some opportunities there and I would hate to see them, you know, slip through if we didn't have the money, maybe even just in contingency.
Yeah, I think that's totally fine. Like I said, I, putting all this stuff together, I failed to get the most recent one. And it had that two-hundred-and-thirty thousand shown on the line in road bridge under contingency. That, I did put that into equipment. So, I would need to make a change based on that. And then make, if the commission's agreeable to putting the, in the fifteen percent, just taking all that money, put it down in contingency, we can do that. And then come back in a week and just present the, everything agreed to deal and just have the commission's approval. I think it'd be good just for the sake of wherever this is here, just because this is what we've committed to the, to the citizens and just if we have a, a commission approve, approve a vote or approve the allocations, I think that'd be the best. And again, going back to, you know, we, we try to hit these targets. It's not always gonna be a hundred percent. If for some reason we run into some, you know, downturn of the economy and revenues aren't coming in as much, we can adjust them a little bit accordingly, you know, we can still do that. And we have that contingency in there still, too, so.
We, we're at, when we originally came up with these numbers, that was several years ago, we came up with those. We were, we were a bit conservative because we were coming out of COVID. So, when we talk about sales tax being so much better than we expected, we're talking about this sales tax, not necessarily the annual budget sales tax, because we had pressure numbers and, and those estimates for calendar twenty-four, we came up in late twenty-three. So, in other words, the general revenue sales tax is not so much richer than we thought because we just did that a few months, well, ten months ago. This we did several years ago. So, that two-thirty that's on the contingency line, does that drop down below into a capital equipment line?
Goes up two lines, looks like.
We just take, we just leave that at a million.
Yes.
And just take the two-thirty here and just put it up in the equipment.
Oh, move it up in the equipment line. I got you, okay.
I put the wrong one, I'm sorry.
No, no, I understand. Got it, okay. And then down below, the increases that are highlighted in yellow, those numbers, for the most part, would fall down into contingency there?
If I'm understanding what Jeff's saying, we would just leave those numbers exactly like they are and just change that contingency to five-hundred-and-fifty. We'd just bump that up accordingly. Is that right?
It's a million, twenty thousand is what I was seeing, the revenue growth beyond projected. So, that million, twenty thousand would go into contingency is what I would propose.
That's the, over, of parks now? That's what we're over in parks now.
Well, yeah, I mean, we are over in parks, so maybe we, since we.
Well, we do have to do something about parks because.
We are, sorry, go ahead.
Because we, we, you know, jumped in there, by the way, the parking lot looks great.
Yeah.
And that was a needed improvement. So, we may have to leave a little bit in a higher parks number.
But we can take it out of contingency.
Well, I guess we can put it in and take it back out.
You're already gonna have to dip into it at this point.
At whatever, yeah. Just put it all in contingency and we'll just.
We, we don't wanna be as loosey-goosey with contingency as a certain elected official is.
Easy. I'm right here.
How did you know I was referring to you?
I knew it was gonna turn around.
Guilty conscience.
From the why, but I'm a quiet person, keeping myself. I don't know why you guys pick on me.
I work for the county commission, so I have to be really careful.
I work for all the citizens.
There you go.
That's good.
We're all, we're all citizens here, right?
All right, so we basically discussion today and you'll go back and make the changes and we can bring it back and approve it. Next?
Next, next week I'll have the final, everything and we'll move forward.
Good job.
We all came together good.
Thank you.
Okay, cool.
Hey, Harry, one thing to add on that parking lot is you can park a big truck in the parking spots. Oh, yeah. Notice that right away.
Can I put my Lincoln in there then?
Oh, yeah, your Lincoln will fit, too.
It won't fit, but it's spacious.
Or you can put two Kias in.
We don't have a boat ramp at the lake, Sam, so you can't run it out onto the lakes.
We've got room for all six of your cars, Sam.
Okay, let's keep moving ahead. AED upgrade discussion. Our emergency management director, Mr. Nick.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here on behalf of our safety committee. We've met several times and had this discussion come up. But our, our current AEDs are Phelps and we purchased batteries for all of them last year. And there's one in particular over Public Works that really needs to be replaced because it just drains the battery no matter what you do to it. And so, our current solution maybe isn't the best, but it's to just leave the battery with it unplugged and then plug it in whenever we need it. So, I would propose that we do what the ambulance and the sheriff's office have used ZOLL, which is a different type of AED. And I would propose that we all have the same type of AED and be uniform throughout the county. And so, there's, there's two ways we can go about this. One is replacing all the devices we currently have, which is five. Or there's a couple extra needs because of like some of the footprints of some of the buildings we have, like Public Works only has one. It would be preferable to have two. You know, the courthouse, you know, they would like AEDs as well. I don't service any over there, but I'm, I know they have some. Holly's told me they have some over there. And so, they're looking at four. And so, if we were to take the, the extra AEDs, that would bring us up to fourteen units instead of five. And, and then the new cabinets to hold those AEDs. But those are the two options I would have. First option, just replacing the ones we have is gonna be about eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. And then the second option will be about twenty-six thousand three hundred, including those cabinets along with the devices.
So, is this a budget discussion we should have at the end of the year or is this something we need to decide today?
We were asking, too, the safety committee was about the marijuana sales tax money, if that was available for this purchase, too. So, we knew other departments were coming up and asking for that, so that's kinda where, so, out of budget time. That's why we brought it up now, plus some of them need to be replaced. And we've had issues. Some of them are the original ones when we first got the AED machines, so.
I think it's rather critical that we, we have these, I mean, it's a question of life and death.
Yeah.
If I might add, the, the other thing it does is it brings up the consistency of training across the board. So, that way, everyone is trained on the AEDs on the same unit. And these units are compatible with Eric's ambulances. The pads are consistent, so they can just disconnect and reconnect. So, you don't have to keep removing the pads. Saves time. So, I would, that's the only thing I was gonna bring up. It's about the consistency of training and the availability of stuff. I mean, we already know that the one that's got a battery that you have to unplug, we need to get rid of that damn thing. We need to get another one in there because the one time someone forgets and something happens, God forbid, and then the unit's not operational and we're aware of it. So, I, I don't know if unplugging it and then plugging it back up, I don't know if that's a, I, I don't know if that personally would be a problem.
Has, has anyone spelled out AED? I know what it is, but not everybody may know what we're talking about here.
It's a automated electronic defibrillator.
Yes, it's, it's serious.
I know some.
Well, you know, the following discussion is gonna be on an AVEU, audio, video equipment upgrade. So, AED, people in the business know what it means, but this is the defibrillator.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
That's right. Court, well, it could be one of our employees, it could be, anybody could.
We heard the one beeping at us the other morning as we came by it. And that was telling us the battery was dying? Is that what it told us?
We had to replace that battery. We disposed of the old battery and put the new one in. We were, you know, fortunate last year to have you all give us the ability to put, you know, spare batteries in the boxes. So, it was, you know, very little effort on my part. We didn't have to order a new one. We had one stand by.
I think we ought to spend the money and spend it out of marijuana and do it now. So that we, do we have a training on this like every once in a while or?
The ambulance holds training. I don't know, sheriff's office.
We do it as part of CPR. It's CPR AED training. We have three in our office and the AED training is part of CPR.
We need to kinda let, let our employees know where they are.
We also have Narcan in the boxes of the health department and we can give you some Narcan to put in the boxes of the courthouse, too, if you need it.
That'd be great.
Are those on some type of contract?
The sheriff gave me this quote. Is this the contract?
ZOLL's pricing for Missouri State contract.
Okay.
It's big contract.
Yeah, the ZOLL does, but the cabinets, I didn't see that on there. That looked like just something they found online.
Yeah, they found that online.
So, but if we buy them separately, we shouldn't have to worry about bidding. How many are we getting?
New cabinets? That's a good question. I, I would have to count up to see how many we need. I think I added.
We have a price of twenty-six thousand three hundred, so how many cabinets in ZOLL was that? Or you're just adding a couple?
Just adding a couple, because the current cabinets we have will work.
Okay, I got it.
We just need to add a couple extra if we're doing option two with the extra devices.
Is that what you were proposing, Commissioner Otto, twenty-six thousand?
Yes, I proposed that we have new equipment where we need it, cabinets everywhere, maybe with enough space for a Narcan, can, spray, is it a? Jack, it's a nose, okay. And we're blessed with the marijuana sales tax that we're collecting. And different departments have come to ask us to spend dollars out of there. And Mark and I have discussed good accounting for it because someday after we, five years down the road, somebody, how much have you collected in this marijuana sales tax and what have you done with it? We'd like to be able to show people easily.
I'll put it on a separate fund because it seems to be the way you're going with that. It was voted on as a general, no restriction, no, you know, law says it can be general revenue to the county. The ballot didn't put any restrictions on it. I was planning on putting it in general revenue, but you guys are.
So, we didn't drop the ball.
It all for a specific project, which is fine. You can do that. So, in next year's budget, I'm putting it in a separate fund because that's the way.
So, yeah.
That's the way you're planning to spend it for specific items, where you didn't legally have to do it.
Maybe we didn't drop the ball. We just didn't answer him. He emailed and asked.
Yeah, I wanted to do the, I wanted to do the.
Separate fund.
Put it in a separate fund. You're gonna use all that money for specific projects and not just for general revenue to the county, which legally we can do.
I'm not su-
The way you're leaning, I'm, the budget, I'll put it in a separate fund. So much easier to keep track of that.
There, we got you an answer.
I just wanna know, yeah, yeah, I just wanna know.
But I think so far we actually spent this money wisely, so.
I'm okay with using it for safety stuff like. I'm okay with using it for safety stuff like that. And I don't think it'd be a bad idea to have some training. I don't think I've ever been through training with the defib. And I mean, it's, you know, me or a lot of them out there, I want somebody to know how to use a darn thing.
I remember speaking with Eric Coy, and he said that his guys could do that training, so I'll just go ahead and volunteer.
That's a good, it's a good idea to have.
What do you do with the old ones? I mean, I've just got some ideas, like Christmas time, you know?
I'd contact Phelps to see if they even take those units back, but they're old enough, I don't think they will.
It'll be trash, then.
Yeah.
Okay. So is that, that twenty-six thousand three hundred was a, was that a guesstimate, or was that a final answer, or?
Well, that was what was given by the quotes. Let me contact the court and make sure that they have all their cabinets and whatnot. So if I can come back and maybe put this on the agenda for next Tuesday, then we can get a final estimate.
Twenty-six thousand or just for the AEDs, oh, right?
No, there was, the twenty-six had cabinets added to that. But I want to make sure that they have all their floors covered.
Got you.
Okay. Bring it back next week and we'll.
Yeah, I think we're okay to proceed with it.
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, discussion of twenty-two-four dash eighteen, audio-video equipment upgrade.
Do you guys have a bid tab on it?
Which one is this? The?
Audio-video equipment upgrade.
AVEU, oh, yeah.
So we bid this out. It was the audio-video upgrade in the commission chambers here. After reviewing and discussing the bids with Melissa and Brian, we feel it's best to reject all the bids and scale back the project requirements for the upgrade. As you can see, the lowest bid, I didn't pronounce all of it. The lowest bid was nineteen thousand, and it didn't meet all the RFP requirements. And then the next lowest was almost thirty-three thousand, and our team feels like they can scale it back and get, still get a good system in place for the chambers. And I noticed that it cut off the bottom of your guys' bid tab. There was, there's more. It goes up to like seventy-nine thousand was the last number.
So we have to write New Jersey.
I would go with your recommendation to rebid or re.
They're going to look at it to scale it back.
Scale.
Yeah.
They did tour a couple of the cities, and they have a much larger room. And so these systems work for that larger room, but we don't need all those.
They actually have two different systems. Like they have the police training room has one of the systems kind of more elaborate than what we had on our bid, of course. And then the city council chambers also has a different system. Both of them are systems that are similar to what was bid, and it just gave us a better idea of kind of what to maybe scale down and like what to, what to change.
Yeah, there was some stuff with the microphones that one of them didn't include because they didn't really feel like we needed it, but it was part of the bid, so that.
It wasn't comparing the apples.
Yeah. And that was partly hard, too.
Completely. Then the next ones up were, you know, quite a bit more.
I mean, they're, I think they're all good systems. It's just they're, I think, a little bit higher.
One, if we wanted to find out, two, is do we need those other microphones? One felt like we didn't, but then there's other people that said, hey, I think you would probably like it better if you did and keep them and.
Well, I think.
Kick that around.
For the commissioners' microphones, I think for you guys, you would probably want to have the ability to turn your mic on and off.
I just wanted to be able to turn Sam's off is all I wanted.
And that was one of the considerations, and another thing that was.
Right, you know, I hope you realize that when you leave today and a couple of your tires are flat, it's probably some of our unhoused, too.
Another thing that was brought up that we didn't consider before was accessibility. And so we are adding hearing-enabled accessibility component to the bid to where we have like earphones for the people that are hearing disabled will be able to come and hear what's going on. But, yeah, we're rewriting it and trying to scale it back and get back out there if that works for you.
So my note on it is scale down and bring back, right?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I'll make a motion to reject the bids for the audio-video equipment upgrade.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Subdivision street acceptance. Yay!
So typically, I try to show up at the end of the year for any subdivision streets that were requested to be taken into the system. We actually finished the road on a street that we've had some issues with in the last couple of years. The developer has requested that we take it over. So with that being said, I would like approval to accept the streets of Murney Drive, Sheridan Drive, Thornridge Court, Thornridge Drive in section seven of the Kaufman subdivision.
Do we have that in an email, too?
Yeah, I sent an email last week that shows the map, the plat, and which streets they are. It's on the twelfth, Thursday.
I see it now, all right.
I was looking at the attachments on me, on the agenda. I didn't have that brought up either.
When we give the, we have a road name, but do we have the blocks? In other words, should it say Murney Drive Blocks 1012 or something like that, or?
Generally, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Eric.
Generally, it's just within that subdivision section is how we list it.
Oh, okay, that's how you limit it. Got it?
Yep.
Okay.
Because everything leading up to this point should be accepted in the system as it is, so.
I got it, okay.
Good. I know Thornridge Drive very well.
And Thornridge is done now, then?
Yes. So we will actually take this into the system for a one-year interim period, which will allow us to close now this winter. And then after the one-year period, we will do a final inspection. And any deficiencies that need to be corrected will be relayed to the developer, and then after that one year, then we can take it into the system fully.
So after today, if we take it in today, building permits are good going forward?
Yes, sir.
All right. Will be issued and go forward. Very good. I'll make a motion to, under subdivision street acceptance, roads Bernie Drive, Sheridan Drive, Thornridge Court, Thornridge Drive, in the Kaufman, I guess it's right here, isn't it? Kaufman LLC subdivision section seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, approval of CMAR recommendation letter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The commission approved utilizing a CMAR for the proposed new juvenile office. The recommendation following the submitted proposals is for Knappols. There was a selection committee, the architects, and then Architects Alliance reviewed the information of the six presented Knappols was the selection. I believe there's a letter that has been emailed already for about the end of last week. I have a copy if you would like, just one.
I was fine with the recommendation. We had interviews last week. I mean, did we have four?
Four.
Four, and we had some very good candidates. It wasn't an easy decision to make, so I think Knappols will take care of us. So I'm fine with approving the letter.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation presented by Architects Alliance on the construction manager at risk for the juvenile facility. And the construction manager at risk per the letter is Knappols.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think Jessica's working with Architects Alliance on getting a contract with that, which is going to be.
Do we have any unfinished business?
I'll make a motion pursuant to section six, ten, point zero-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri. The commission will go into closed session to discuss the following real estate under section six, ten, point zero-two-one, subsection two.
Second.
We're all called, please.
Sam?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.